Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill to adopt the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Carries five zero. Uh, moving on to business item, uh, number one, employee wage discussion. And I believe, are we gonna do this as a, as a closed meeting, or? No? No, it's not, okay.
Yeah, this would have to be open.
Okay.
For statute, uh, closing the meeting, it has to fall under a certain category.
Okay.
And this does not qualify.
Alright, alright. Uh, I was thinking that the wage discussion would be as a closed meeting, but. Okay, well, yeah, I mean, I had asked Mike to kinda put some information together for us. As far as comparables to other cities.
So I can, if you want, I can just run through these real quick, make sure everybody knows what we got.
Sure.
On the multicolor sheet, um, at the top, we have what is, uh, staff's understanding of, uh, what I, Sandy County approved, uh, for Administrator Wood. Um, we've got in black there, we've got the current wages, where she's sitting currently. Of course, the difference, twenty twenty-four, it's got the, um, the three percent after probation, which is my understanding, this approved. And two and a half percent COLA, um, so you see what that would result at a Sandy County. Um, then what we have, um, on the, on the schedule for twenty twenty-four. Um, you see the difference, and then there's some additional compensation approved by the county, um, for car allowance and, uh, contribution to deferred comp. Um, under that is what we have, what we have under that is our, um, steps for grade twenty, that's the grade that Administrator Woods on. Um, and this is, um, for twenty twenty-three, so this is current. Uh, the thing to know there is, is that this is from inflation adjusted, but otherwise, this is from our wage study that we did back in twenty nineteen. And, um, we only utilize steps one through nine. When the, when it was put together, the idea was, is if you need to be more competitive against public or private sector, you utilize, you may utilize bonus steps. Steps ten, eleven, and twelve, but otherwise, we don't, to be honest, we utilize those so little, I didn't realize there were three, I thought there were only two. So, that's how much discussion that normally gets. And you basically see is underneath there, you got the, what the annual is, right? So it's the hourly rate, and then underneath, it's the annualized amount. The second stapled, uh, two-page handout, um, this is basically. This is the last, um, data dump for the League of Minnesota Cities Salary Survey. That portal is going through changes, they're gonna o- open up a new portal for that, so right now, we don't have any new data to pull right now. But this is what we were able to take last time it was open. And so what we've got here is basically, this is, um, by organization, I just put in cities, you know, so we're comparing against what we, we are currently doing. And then, um, it's self-reporting to the league. So there are no cities that are required to do it, but if you don't participate in the survey, you don't get access to the survey. So it's not gonna include everybody, but it would include a strong majority, we'll call it that way. Then based on the middle column, that says last updated, that's the last time that that city reported. So some of those were in twenty twenty-two, reporting twenty twenty-two wages, and some were twenty twenty-one, reporting twenty twenty-one wages. Um, so to try to get everything on apples to apples, when we're looking down that list, um, I simply assigned a COLA. That is kind of in line with us and what, um, Abdu, our auditors, think it was fair and reasonable about what most did, there are some outliers, one way or the other. So if you reported in twenty twenty-one, I added three percent and then four percent, and if you reported in twenty-two, I added four percent, just to get, so we're on a par, roughly on par. For twenty twenty-three numbers. Um, and then after that, um, based on the bolded, uh, current projected amount, uh, for each of those cities, um, I just sorted it largest down to smallest. And the list is pretty darn long, so rather than distributing seven pages, um, I cut the list off at Cambridge. And that happened to be fit nicely on two pages, so that was nice. But that's, uh, that's, uh, that's what we've got together.
Okay, perfect, well, thank you for putting that together, and I wanted to make sure that we had at least kind of a starting point of data to, to kinda start from, and then we can, uh, kinda move forward on the discussion here, so. I don't know, anybody, uh, you know, I, I was kind of approached and, and sort of asked to call this meeting, and I, I'm not sure really which way I, I feel about it. And, uh, I'm open to, I'm open to discussion, and I think it's, it's something that I think is worth discussing. So, anybody that wants to kinda take the lead on it, talk me into it.
I have a question for Mike, I, I do not understand the grade, the steps. So, for example, when somebody gets, or if the administrator gets over a certain step, does everybody below them move up a step?
No, grades are assigned by position, um, and those positions are basically ranked based on your duties and responsibilities, right? Kind of, uh, how much expertise do you have, and a lot is on responsibilities, right? If you're over, if you oversee nobody, you have a, a lower grade, and you're gonna get paid less. If you oversee everybody, like Josie, you're at a higher grade, you're gonna get paid more. But then, going from step to step, one to two, four to si- four to five, whatever it is, is, and each person's independent, right? So in, in this, if I remember correctly, in this next budget cycle, I'll move on my scale from step eight to nine, because I've been walking forward one step each year. Uh, but we'll have other staff that are moving from step one to step two, or step four to step five. Um, and so generally, it should line up, um, wherever you start, right? Maybe you're, when you started, your merits warranted step one, maybe your, your merits warranted step three. But then it would be one year on your anniversary, you find yourself on a new step, then one year later, new step.
Is there anything in the union contracts that if you increase one person's pay, that others, okay? Just wanna cover all my bases there.
Yeah, and the city hall staff isn't unionized, so they're, so, but, when it comes time to negotiate the union contract, you better believe that they will look at what city hall people get paid, and they will want, just, they'll use it to their advantage, one way or another. So that, that is certainly something that, that will happen.
So I guess I, I had wanted to discuss this, because I think, uh, Josie's great at her job, um, and really, that position is by far the most important position in the city. Um, and her leadership skills and work ethic are top-notch. So I guess I would, I'm just, it would be a real bummer to, to lose out on her, because I don't think we'll ever be able to replace her for what we're paying. And also, she knows the system so well, knows all the employees here, knows city people. I mean, I think she's a perfect fit for our city, and I'd, I think it's important that we discuss how we can keep her. Just because I think we need her, and I think she does great work.
One thing, you, Luke, you kinda know about it, but George, you don't, you're not aware, Josie started out here managing the community center. She went from managing the community center to Park and Rec. Park and Rec, she went to Public Works. Public Works, she came to assisting min- assistant administrator, and was groomed for this position. That gal has worked her way up from this bottom ladder, and she knows how every department operates. And to find somebody that's capable of how I, it, how I Sannie's departments work. The county's level, or another city's departments operate differently. But to find somebody to replace what she has done here, and the morale that she keeps with this staff. This staff is, adores her, they will almost go out of, they'll do everything they can for her, and that's because I've talked to the staff. I've had this conversation for over a month about this stuff. And to have that person there, whoever, if it, we place it in-house, or somebody coming in, is gonna change that dramatic. Prior, and I'm not naming names, but priorly, there was a revolving door, every three months, we had employees going in and out of here. And when you do that, we pay more money for retraining, we pay money for advertising, to hire, processing, interviewing. All this stuff costs us money, plain and simple, across the board. I think that if, the, what I have in mind to wanna offer her is well worth every penny of that, to retain her. Like I said in the last Tuesday's meeting, how many other city administrators are you gonna see out here at six o'clock on a Sunday morning, when they were camping? Her and I went and got barricades, her and I set them up. She was here sending messages out on Facebook, telling us of the water issues. I'm gonna tell you that, previous city administrators that this city's had, and I've gone through a couple of them here, besides her, would never have done that. They would never be able to be reached on the phone. Josie has always returned my calls, or she's taken my calls, it doesn't matter what time of night or day.
Yep.
And I'm gonna tell you something, somebody that has that much involved in that, in this city, is a huge asset. That alone itself is a major story pole to start on and build. I feel that we are gonna have more problems if she leaves than we will if we try to retain this. If this offer's made to her, and she doesn't accept it, that is not on us, at that point.
What kind of number do you have in your head?
I wanna say between twenty and twenty-five thousand a year. That is going to match what the colony's giving her. Up to a certain point, other than, uh, the car allowance and the, whatever that.
Yeah, what is that DEF comp?
He might get up into that.
Deferred compensation, right, so it's kinda like you're, you can think of it like, uh, like a, like a 401K that the employer is filling up. Think, yeah, it's a retirement account, so.
But, I, I don't, I think if, I don't wanna get in.
Does that match, Mike, or that's just, they just put that in regardless?
My understanding is, is that is what the county would be contributing, and she would not be compelled to contribute, she would have the option, but.
By no means do I wanna get in bidding war with the county. But I think in our best interest, it would help the county and ourselves to retain her here.
I agree with that, the amount of retraining costs and getting someone familiar with the system, and then they could be a bad match, and it's just, it's a big, it's a big risk and a big question mark whether, you know, if we hire somebody, they had a hard enough time finding somebody at the county. I mean, why would we have any better luck? I, I think we're gonna end up being in a pickle if we don't try and at least similarly match the offer or something close. I think she's well worth it. Um, I'm so impressed with how hard she works.
I am too.
Yep.
I mean, I, like I said, you're not gonna get another administrator, I've been through some issues with previous administrators. They were never here on a Wednesday, uh, Sunday morning at six o'clock, when they were camping and left their family to come in and deal with something with this city.
Yep.
Because I think she takes her job very close to heart.
Yep.
She's worked very hard, very hard to get where she's at. I mean, I don't wanna throw words and muzz, but I, I just don't feel that that was how this transpired to where the offer at the county was right. I'm not, I'm not stepping on toes or anything else, I just felt common courtesy to make a call and saying, hey, what's your thoughts?
Right.
I would never walk to a county employee and say, hey, why don't you come work for the city of I Sannie? Never would I do that. If that employee approached me, it's a different story. But that wasn't the case here.
I agree.
You know, I, I guess I would kinda caution you guys on, on going further with that, because I think you're. If you were in that position, and you were at the county, and you had just gone through a round of hiring, and you said, okay, well, you know, we didn't get anybody that we wanted, right? I mean, if it was me, I would, I would say, well, how do, who do I know that could fill that spot? I mean, I would look locally, I mean, you look like, I mean, Josie is where I would've gone, because of all the things you guys just said about her, you know, she's awesome. She is really, really good, she's excellent at her job, I mean, I can't fault them for, for mentioning it to her, I mean, it was her choice to, to pursue it too, you know, so. I, uh, I don't wanna act out of anger, and I, I get where you guys are coming from, and I get the frustration there too, cuz it is frustrating when you have that happen, but I mean, that's.
Oh, there's more to it than I think you really know, and I don't, I'm not gonna elaborate.
I think I probably know what, where you're heading, I think.
And I, and I just don't, I just don't think.
I think I know more than you, than you think I, I probably know.
I know, but I just want it to be stated, I don't, it's, it, there's more to this picture than you just see line one and two.
Yes.
So, it, it doesn't matter, that, that's besides the point, the offers were made, I feel that we should, as a council, as for our community, for our residents. Because she's always been approachable by residents, which makes the residents more comfortable, she's always addressed the matters. We may not ever get that again.
Yep.
And that doesn't do our residents any favors. And I don't, I, I, and I've asked, I've talked to Mr. Becker about it, and he's said it's very doable, what we're discussing right now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's undoable by any means, I, I think it's, I mean, it, we're not that far off, you know, and I think, uh.
And if you look, if you look at this, this, uh, two-page memo that he just gave us.
Yeah, we're not out of line with, with other, other cities either.
With all this information, and I, I stand, he's one of the fastest-growing cities in Minnesota, it's gonna do, it's gonna require the most administration. I mean, she always, I've, she's one of the few people I've ever worked with that has never let me down on anything, so I think it's, I think it's, it's in line that, I mean, she's, even that offer is still.
Look at that, Luke, you're looking at that, you look at Hugo. Look at what they're paying in Hugo.
Yep, right.
And I'm telling you what, I don't think we're that far off with the size of Hugo.
I agree.
And I, and, and it, she wouldn't have to travel any further to make more than what she's even doing at the county level. And I think that, I think that she has some mixed emotions on this, and I, I truly believe that. And I just wanna try to put this thing to bed sooner than possible. Now, on, with that being said, I do not know if she would accept that offer. We also have to start thinking, and I, and that, nothing to be reacting on today, but we gotta start looking at a plan B.
So, Mike, I have a question for you, if we were to say, offer her more money, and then say if she didn't take it, would that negatively affect our ability to hire back at a lower level, you think? Or is that not really, because she's so established and have so much experience, so?
Yeah, you, you, you'd still go about the hiring process in the same way.
Okay.
I mean, you're, you're still gonna make an offer to a future administrator based on those merits. And somebody else's merits and standing in the community are not the next candidates.
Sure, okay.
But, I mean, I would make the argument too, that, I mean, and I, like I said, I, I really came in here without knowing which way I was gonna kinda come down on this, and, and, uh. But, I mean, I do have some, some arguments, cuz I, I kinda had a feeling that this was how the conversation was gonna go. I mean, it is good for our residents in the city to also have somebody at the county level that has all the qualifications that Josie has, you know what I mean? And I, um, when she first told me about it, I just was excited for her, I didn't even, you know, I mean, I, she wanted to do that, I mean, that's an, what an awesome opportunity for her to, to get to move up and to advance. And you just said, you know, how she worked her way up from the bottom, and, and, I mean, to, to get to the point where you're desirable enough to where people are seeking you out to come and run a county. To start from managing the community center, I mean, that's pretty neat, you know, I mean, that's something to be really proud of, and what she's done here is something to be proud of. But, but at the same time, I mean, I think we've got people at the city right now, in our staff, that, that probably, I think, would be a really good fit. I mean, I think we could hire from within and move people up, um, and not lose the institutional knowledge, and, and, you know, not spend the extra money. Not that I'm really concerned about, about the extra money, to be honest with you, I, I don't, it's not that much extra, right? So, I mean, it adds up, but at the same time, y- you gotta pay people what they're worth, so I, that doesn't concern me a ton, but Dan, what do you, what do you think?
Uh, yeah, I, you know, kinda agree with your train of thought, and I, I'm, don't wanna lose her, but I don't wanna hold her back. I mean, ultimately, no matter what we offer, if that's what she wants, she's gonna do what's best for her and her family.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, either, either way, um, we would benefit still, keeping her in the county, obviously, if she worked for the county. Or obviously, if she's, she accepts our counter offer, or not counter offer, but offer to stay. We're, we're gonna benefit by having her still here.
Yeah.
I think the county benefits from her being here more, just as much so. Because she's been working.
I mean, we don't have an obligation to the county, we have an obligation to our residents, I'm just saying that, to, to consider it as, as a, a total loss for, to, for our residents. It's still a gain to have her at the county, is all I'm saying, it's not.
It's not a, uh, it, it, it's not a.
And if we have capable people to.
Huge impact, like it is right now.
Yeah.
If she wasn't here, but at least she would, worst case scenario, if she's still working for the county that we.
Thankfully, it's still a county, right?
And how well that works out, we don't know yet.
Right.
I mean, here's the thing, we offer to her, if we decide that, that's what we're gonna do. We don't know if she's gonna accept or not. So it's not, it's, we aren't gonna know unless we make this offer.
Correct.
And if it is, I'm not against Mayor Gordon's, I prefer to retire within, I wanna retain all our employees that we have. This, this office works lean, and it's very well-oiled, and I don't wanna throw any water in that right now.
Yep.
It's, you, Dan has been here for some, some of it. But there was a revolving door in here, and employees hated coming to work every day. Right now, we have employees that look forward to coming to work, to work under Josie, and have stressed that to me.
Mm-hmm, it's good leadership.
That is good leadership.
Yep.
And when you have that good leadership, that means even things even work better off. Now, another thing, when you talk about these other cities, you look at some of these other cities, there's probably assistants underneath that city administrator.
Correct.
That dot dollar amount doesn't end there, which we're not doing.
Yep.
We're working, operating, basically, department heads running that department without money, that, without any assistance, other than Josie helping out when they can, Katie helping out when they can, Jaden helping out when they can. Everybody's pitching in, and if you had an un, hot, if you had a hostile work environment, that would never happen, and that never happened prior to this.
Yep.
So you gotta keep that in mind. It's, this thing is operating pretty darn lean, and these other cities are, they're paying another minute, they're paying the helpers, they're paying assistants to them, which we're not. So it's not like it's, it's not like we're going above what those other, those cities are paying.
That's, yeah, that's a good point, it's not like that's probably not ever gonna happen, eventually, it probably would happen, an assistant administrator here.
Yep.
When, when staff and we decide that that's time for something like that to happen, but we do save a lot of money by not being an assistant.
Absolutely.
So.
So it's not like it's.
With that money saved, why not offer her a little bit more? And then, like you say, if she takes it, she takes it, she doesn't, she's gonna follow her heart. And she'll have a discussion with her family, I'm sure.
And that's why I said.
And then we go from there.
That's why I said, we make the offer, she turns it down, that's up to her.
Yep.
But at least we're showing her that we do care enough to keep her in this position. And I don't think it's just, I don't think it's about the challenge of the job.
She likes the challenge.
She likes it, she loves a challenge, she's, I mean, she stepped up from day one, I've known her since the day she started with the city of I Sannie. And I'll tell you what, there was times that was rocky between her and I, I couldn't as, I, and I've admitted that I was wrong. She, I, her, I couldn't, I wouldn't, couldn't care to see her walk in the door for a while there. But I'll tell you what, she's proved me a hundred percent wrong, and she does this city solid, and I will always have her back as much as I can.
I agree completely.
Excuse me, I just wanna make note that we are live on Facebook now.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
I guess I would, me personally, I would like to see that we either match or go above what the county's offering, because I think she's just that, she's worth it, um. So I don't know if the twenty-five thousand dollar area is getting it close, or if we wanna match the other stuff too, or, um.
I, I personally, if we offered her twenty to twenty-five thousand, if she comes back and counters offers and asks for a car allowance, I, I don't think that's the end of the world. I mean, we already have, you know, we got our chief takes, gotta take home, we got our lieutenant's gotta take home car. If she took a vehicle home, as much as she comes into this city when there's, when it's needed, I have no problem with that, but I just assume, just offer her that.
Car allowance basically covers her to drive her personal vehicle. So giving her a city vehicle car allowance just provides her with gas, the locks, her insurance money to, to drive her personal vehicle.
And for the.
Show up on weekends, things like that.
Sorry, for the sake of discussion, if, we're, is the council's discussing matching what the county has already approved. Um, it is enough for you guys to just say, this is the total dollar amount. You, you really don't need to break it down, whether it's car allowance or whatever, you know, or we're, we are or are not using the bonus steps. HR Director Grotty did talk to, um, Labor Attorney this morning, and he said, you know, if you, if council wants to just go ahead by motion and say, we're offering X amount, that's it. That's.
Excuse me, um, so basically, the car allowance and the deferred comp, it's just, at the end of the day, the number's still gonna be the same, it's just putting it into different buckets, so it's. At the end of the day, the number is the same. So, if you think of it that way, you don't have to think of, well, if we give her this in that, and this in that area, like, don't, uh.
Okay.
Don't think of it like that, cuz it's too confusing, so just think of it just simply as like a dollar amount, um.
So it's the one seventy-eight plus the five thousand plus the ten thousand is basically what she's getting, or is that?
That would be for twenty twenty-four.
Yes, or is that, is?
It's best to be understand that's accurate, so you're.
Okay.
For, in that scenario, it's for twenty twenty-four, by the time she gets the end, she's through the six-month probation, all those things, it's, you know, she's looking at a roughly one ninety-three. Is total compensation, whatever buckets it goes into, one ninety-three would be.
So, I wanna clarify what you said, so, for example, they pass twenty-five thousand more a year in, in wage, and a car allowance. Now, when you budget it out, would it show the administrator position would be twenty-five thousand more, or would it be thirty thousand more?
You'd, it functionally, you would just see it as one lump sum number, that's why it's not important in this scenario to be making a distinction between what is or is not car allowance. She would receive it in her paycheck, functionally the same.
I, I understood that part, I was just wondering how it would be budgeted, I mean, uh.
And, and, and that's also true, is, is like, her, her salary is allocated, seventy percent goes to the general fund, thirty percent goes to enterprise funds, so water, sewer, and liquor. And that would, any increase that you guys would offer would also be allocated the same way. And if we drew a distinction between, you know, this much is wage, this much is car allowance, still gets allocated seventy, thirty, that, all those things still hold true.
I guess I think, I mean, the fairest thing for us and the county, I feel like, would just be to match the offer and see which one she goes with. But if that's too much, I get that.
You were talking, so I mean, to match it, if you, all, all in, so I mean, we've got, and I've heard we have a little better benefit package, right? Is that, than what they've got, right, so. Um, but just, just dollar amount-wise, what we're talking is, we're gonna be next year after COLA, and, uh, that kinda thing, we're gonna be at one fifty-six, four thirty-one, right?
Correct.
And that's everything, all in for us, except for, you know, benefits on top of that, of course, but.
Yeah, that does, that does not include, um, the HSA contribution, that's not, right? So what we're, what we have listed here, when we say current wage, it's like, that's what would show up on a W two, right? And an HSA contribution is a separate tax deal altogether.
But, so I mean, dollar amount-wise, we're, we're short thirty-six thousand, five sixty-nine, right?
Yeah, one might, you, you could decide that, hey, there's a, a, a good HSA contribution, and maybe it's fair to lower the one in, because there is, I mean, our health insurance is pretty dang good. Anybody who tells you otherwise isn't paying attention.
Okay.
Not, not to take away her responsibility, what she has here, cuz it's a lot, but it's a little less, I would imagine, than being a county administrator.
Yeah, I would say that's probably true.
Sure.
So, like, you know, like, um, and she, I, I'm sure she understands that.
Right.
Um, so, like what you were saying, twenty-five, maybe that'd be a, a good area.
Sure.
I don't know, I'm just kinda spit-bong, but with the HSA contributions, a little less responsibility.
Plus the health insurance is better.
Health insurance is better, that might, that might be a, a, enough appeal to her to question her leaving or not, you know, I don't know.
What's your two guys' thoughts on the dollar amount?
Okay, so.
Then obviously, next year, twenty twenty-four, the COLA is scheduled to be what percentage for here?
Three point seven five.
So that'd be on top of the, her new wage.
Well, that's what I was looking at, was comparing twenty twenty-four to what we would be at twenty twenty-four.
Right.
So next year should be at one fifty-six, is that what I heard, correct?
Right.
Um, okay.
So, and we could even make the offer on top of that, instead of on top of what she makes now, we could make that offer on top of the one fifty-six that she would get next year.
They're also giving her an extra two percent after sixty days, is that what it was?
I think it was six months.
Six months?
After probation.
Three months.
Six months, three percent.
Yeah, they're gonna get, she's gonna get another three percent in six months.
That is reflected on.
But I mean, if you take it, you take what our COLA is and what their COLA is.
Yeah, but that.
It's roughly two more percent.
Yeah, those two, those, all those things are already accounted for on here. So our, our COLA is represented in there, and the, their COLA, as we understand it, and the probationary increase is, is on the. the landscape sheet.
Basically, how I put the colored sheet in front of you together is I broke it down based off of how the newspaper reported it, just to try to make sense of it, so it was more clear.
So basically, the way you're looking at it, the difference is, say, twenty-two thousand in twenty twenty-four to what she would be getting right now. So if we're at that twenty-five range, that's a good place to start.
Thirty-six.
No. You're adding this, you're probably adding this, this in there, that's.
Fifteen grand.
This is the difference, I, I understood you the same way. This is what she would be at at the county, this is what she would be at here, this is the difference.
The.
I get it.
Mayor, mayor's got that right. The, that five and that ten is extra, right? So the, the way the county has, has approved this, or at least the way I understand it, right? I, I'm not gonna claim to be an expert on that, but, um, you know, they, they've said, all right, look, here's what we'll, we'll understand for your wage and then there are these things that sit on top. And so my understanding is, is I don't know that there's been any discussion or agreement at the county level about, you know, that car allowance is for, um, fifty, eighty. Would that be subject to COLA? Would that change year to year? I don't know. Um, I've seen it, I've seen cities do it both ways, sometimes they automatically do it, sometimes it's just a set amount, it's three hundred bucks a month and that didn't, that's how it is. Uh, same with the deferred comp, she asked for ten. To my knowledge, there was no discussion about raising that year after year, it's just ten. I could be wrong, but I, I don't have any knowledge that it's different than that.
So yeah, I mean, if we wanted to match it, we're talking about thirty-six.
I guess I would, I would more so shoot for thirty, but I don't think twenty-five's unreasonable.
Why, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, it, it is a lot of money, but it's gonna cost us a lot more if we gotta rehire. I mean, if you look at.
Over the course of a few years, I mean, you're talking.
Yeah.
Hundred grand, you know, I mean.
But it is the most important position in any city, it's kinda like the CEO of a business, if you have, if you have a bad CEO, the CEO is, the business is going under.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not disagreeing with you.
It is, it is tough to stomach it, but.
I mean, I just think we have people in, I think we've had an awesome group of people that we could draw from.
I mean, you gotta remember, if we offered twenty-five or thirty, it's still less than what the county's offering. But what's it gonna, her health insurance gonna cost? It's gonna bring her down to that twenty-five thousand dollar offer that we're, we are discussing, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Cuz that comes out of your paycheck.
Yeah.
But then you also think, now.
Your portion of health insurance. Now, if you, if it's a three hundred, say, three hundred dollar paycheck, the difference between the two, um, you know. Over a two, three, five year period? That's a lot of money.
Right.
It's saved.
Sure.
By staying here. So I'm just saying that as an example. She's gonna look at that, I mean. She's, she's not a fool.
Mm-hmm.
She's gonna look at that savings. She's gonna look at the big picture. You know?
I believe.
But then you also, just, sorry to interrupt you, when you talk about promoting somebody within, now you need to replace that person that you promoted. Now, that's another hiring process, now to get somebody up to speed that they were at, it's, it's.
Yeah.
It's a never-ending spending cycle. It's gonna be a lot more than this.
Agreed.
If we did promote within. I, I, I will speak out of school. When I say this, the staff has pretty much indicated they would like me, like us to retain Josie.
Yep.
And if we did everything in our power to retain her and she refuses, it's on her, and it's not on us. We've done our, we've done what we could do. And I'll tell you, if you, you have, you, you have employees, Mayor Gordon, and when you got one that's disgruntled, it can take a lot with them. And I know right now, there's, I, I, I can't say names, but I know there's county employees right now are not happy. Right now.
County employees, or?
County employees right now happy with this offer that they gave Josie.
Well, what do you?
Because it's, they're not.
They're not getting as much as she is?
Well, that's part of it, it was part of it that they felt that there was something else that could have been done differently and they're going over their budgeted amount that they asked for.
Well, then that begs the question is, should we be going over our budgeted amount?
There's a big difference, though. We are working and striving and keeping a, a balance.
Yeah.
We got Mr. Becker to thank for a lot of that. And we can still, and I've asked Mr. Becker this and yes, he's still, but even with doing this, we'll, this will still project to that twenty, thirty date that this city will be debt-free. And that's seven years. And it's not changing that dramatic. So if I say that we can do that and still stay in that seven year, uh, twenty, thirty projection, I'm all for it. If it was gonna change that dramatically, I would have to think about it. But it's not changing it. And that was a goal long set before this topic even came up. We're talking years prior to this. I know when Mr. Becker took over the position as Finance Director, it was a nightmare.
Mm-hmm.
And it took him five years to get it where it's at today. And if he could do that in five years, what can we do in seven if we have the right people working there?
What do you think, George?
It's hard to, you know, Joe, it's, it sucks that she got this offer. And I know she didn't, with personal conversation with her, she wasn't gonna take an offer unless it was a really good offer and she had demands on the offer. She still hasn't signed a letter of resignation, she still hasn't told the county a hundred percent she's moving over to the county, so it would be hard for me to make a, a big counter offer. I mean, if, if she really likes it here, which she told me the first formal talk I had with her. Um, she lives, eats and breathes Isani, I believe that. She could probably do the same with the county, but I, I think she really enjoys it here. Um. I'm on the fence on this. I mean, we do have a lot of good people in-house, too.
She showed interest in the county, or else she went to.
She was approached by the county.
Yep, but she went through the interview process.
Right. She did.
Yeah, you know.
That's.
And I'm not saying this is good or bad.
And I, and I don't blame her for that either, I would've done the same thing, I mean. And, and no matter what happens, she's in a great position, yeah, and that's exactly, that's her responsibility to do that, yeah.
The next challenge?
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, that, that is, that's in her ballpark to decide that, what, you know, all we can do is make an offer. And she's, ultimately, she's gonna do what's best for her and that's, and I think, um, that's, I think that's what any one of us would do in that position.
Mm-hmm.
Like I said, if we just make the offer and she returns it, she rejects it or she keeps it? I think I'm gonna tell you right now, she's probably gonna accept that offer if we don't call her an offer.
Well, these numbers we're looking at for administrators are up to a couple of years old and I know a lot of, a lot of wages have increased and I don't know on the administrator side if, if there's been a lot of increase.
So on that document that you're referring to, the current projected would be the most accurate assumption for twenty twenty-three wages, the bolded section?
Yeah, I updated that column, I, I created that column based on their last reported data, so some reported in twenty twenty-one, some reported in twenty twenty-two, and I applied a reasonable three and four percent COLA based on his one or two years. Um, so hopefully those current projected, I, the accountant in me would say that those numbers are materially correct. Right? They're not far enough, they are not correct, but they are not far enough off to influence a decision or an outcome.
And I can, I mean, I don't wanna say too much here, but I can almost guarantee she's better than most of these people on this list that run these, these other cities. Cuz I know, I actually know another city administrator and she does not do nearly the job that Josie does and she's paid more than, she's higher up on this list. So I think it's really hard to find somebody to replace what she does for us and how much experience she has with our city and with us and the whole staff. And the only reason she even considered that, because she lives in Isani County and it's still Isani, so she's still helping, but I, I think she likes it here a lot, so, I mean, if we make a reasonable offer. But I, I get what George is saying, I get what Jimmy's saying, I just think it's more value of us to.
I think it's in the city's best interest.
It is, and then the residents' best interest, even though it sounds like a lot out of pocket, a good administrator can make or break your city in their budget, point blank.
Can't argue that.
Well, you guys didn't, nothing against previous city administrator, but his, his hands were tied and I think, you know what I'm referring to.
Yep.
And.
I remember it.
Yep, and he, and I think a lot of that point was is, he was getting closer to retirement, he didn't wanna ruffle feathers. Maybe in younger in his life, he probably would've. And I don't think Josie's got a problem telling you where the bear crap's in the woods or not.
Yep.
So in that, I respect alone. So I, I think she's a huge asset to the city, I think she's a huge asset to our staff and in for every department, because she has worked most of those departments. She may have not really worked finances, but she works hand in hand with Mr. Becker, so she's not oblivious to what's being done. So I'd say she's done her, I think she's earned her wings here.
Can I just point out also, um, right now, just the way hiring has been for all industries, the market is tough out there, there's not a lot of people moving positions. It's not easy to find a lot of staff, so if Josie was to leave and it didn't go internally, um, looking for apps externally, as the county has experienced as well, um, it's, there's not a, a lot coming in and hiring a recruitment firm, which is how we have found department heads here before, that costs upwards of twenty thousand dollars. Just a little food for thought.
If we don't keep her, we're basically gonna go through the same thing the county's gone through the last six months. And that's, that's the scariest part of it. You could spend twenty grand on a recruiting firm and still don't get a good candidate.
Yeah.
That's, that's not a, a.
And then that would be money we didn't.
Yeah.
We could've kept her and been.
And been still.
And that was twenty grand, just turn off the windows and do it all, right?
Or we could fill it internally, and I mean.
But then we still have to fill that other job that we fill internally.
No, you're right, you're right.
And then we're gonna spend that extra money on that.
I do think that it's probably easier to fill a position that's lower on the totem pole than, than city administration probably is, but, yeah, I mean, you think there's more qualifications for that that people would have, right? But, but.
But also higher pay is gonna bring in more applicants in general, so if you have a lower position, you might be less likely to get an applicant for it.
I mean, I think it's getting, uh, from my experience at least, and of course, the restaurant industry is not anything similar to this, but I mean, from my experience there, it has gotten easier to hire within the last couple of months, I would say, and I don't know when, when was the last time we hired here, was seasonal employees, I suppose? Right, or?
Um, yeah, we've had the community development specialists that we changed the position to associate plan.
How many applications did we get for that?
Seven?
Seven? And it was open for like three weeks or so, right, or?
Three, three and a half.
That's not a lot for that.
Not a lot, no, it's not a lot.
Mr. Becker, by offering her that certain dollar amount and by enacting the bonus steps, that would probably be the wisest way to do that.
Um. Attorney Sullivan says we do not have to officially go by the steps. He says that if the council would like to just simply say, um, you're, Josie, you're on step nine, you're at step nine now, plus twenty, or twenty-five, or whatever, he says, that's fine. He says, you don't, don't have a problem doing that, so I would, I trust his advice.
He said basically, it's a standalone position of an employee of one and it's non-union, so you can just name a number.
But the union will use it, when we negotiate with them next time. They will say, oh, well, here, look at this, and, and then, and it will be, whenever your other folks come and their contract is up, they'll be saying, hey, look at this. So that will happen, without a doubt, but.
They've been pretty, been pretty good here, far as treating everybody equal.
Yeah, no, yeah, but, but I mean, you know what I'm saying, I mean, it will, it will be a topic of conversation, cuz that's just how it goes, but, whether it's right or wrong, is, it is what it is.
Do those employees enjoy working for Josie?
I don't know. Well, I think you guys, uh, if I were to, to guess right now, we're probably at the three and, three and a half to one and a half, maybe? Uh, if we can call it that, so why don't you guys start putting a number together, how we get, how do you wanna approach it and, uh? What do you guys think?
You know, I think when you took a look at it, that number that way, I think we should make an offer of thirty thousand dollars, pay increase.
I agree.
And, uh, get the letter out, emailed out to her ASAP if, if we decide so. I think it's gonna be in the city's best interest that we keep her and that's, I wholeheartedly believe that. And I've seen a lot of things change in this city, trust me.
Yep.
Thirteen years, fourteen years being on this council, I've seen a lot of change. I've seen a lot of finance directors going, I've seen four of them in here. I've seen three Jadens. Just for part of it. So there's, that's a lot of people. And if he figures twenty grand pop in each one of those, it could be just a lot worse than that after that. So that'd be my motion.
You think we need to go that far? I mean, that.
Don't wanna, but I don't wanna sit and play games. It could come back and, well, I want this, I don't wanna get in a bit anymore with the county, but if we offer that, I think that's a fair offer. She doesn't have to change her shoes, she's got her same shoes on she wears every day coming in here, she doesn't have to change her shoes going elsewhere.
We got county-issued shoes, or what?
Okay, name cave.
All right, all right.
Is that better for you? Please.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you that I think you, you wanna, you wanna make an offer you can live with and that's your final offer and you wanna make the first offer, the, the one that is the offer, so I'm, I'm.
It's, it's not a.
Not an easy decision to make for us when we're spending other people's money.
Well, yeah.
But I think that, but in the longevity.
But do we wanna go back and forth?
I don't wanna go back and forth.
No.
And I think if, if we retain her, I think you will find that the citizens will be happier also. Because it's gonna save us money in the long run.
Well, she's good at her job, really good, so it's, I mean, I, I'm kinda surprised that administrators don't make more money than they do.
It's like, see, it's like. She doesn't have an assistant.
Yeah, exactly, and that's saving you fifty grand a year right there, at least, minimum. So I think it's, I think it's worth it and I'm, I'm extremely frugal, but I think this is one area where you.
That's probably a subject that will come down the road.
Mike, I got a question for you, do you have an answer, maybe you don't, but, uh, what is the average income for someone in the city of Isani? Not that it, not that it necessarily matters, but I'm just curious, just the average resident in the city of Isani.
I thought it was sixty-one.
Sixty-one?
I think that's.
It was a little higher than that.
Or sixty-three, it was.
It was just in that study, I don't know, a couple of months back that that guy had from the U of M.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't, don't, do not quote me, I was gonna, but I was thinking seventy-one.
Okay.
Okay.
Was what I was thinking, but.
So, I mean, that, not, not that there's, I mean, of course, there's some people making more and there's some people making less, but I mean, I just. When you're talking about spending a hundred and ninety-three thousand, or well, we're talking about a hundred and, if we add another thirty, we're talking about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars plus benefits.
If you look at any CEO pay of any business, the size of the city of Isani, their CEO is gonna be paid more than what we're paying our administrator. And it's, it's a, it's a phenomenon in economics, the CEO pay phenomenon, and it's just because you wanna pay the most important person the most money, cuz there's that, just that much more incentive to do your job better, and if you don't, you're, you're proven to fail as a, as a business or as, as a city at that point.
Another way of looking at it is you figure what our annual budget is she's in charge of, overall. There's companies that are quarter that, that have CEOs that make millions.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just saying, I mean, we, we promised those people making seventy thousand a year that we're gonna, we're gonna lower their taxes, right? I mean, that was what, at least I did.
I've never promised lowering taxes.
I know, but I mean.
You can't lower, you can't never lower their taxes. Just for a simple fact, your property value increases, your taxes just increase.
We can.
And if they increase fifty percent, well, you aren't gonna change that.
But that's what I'm saying, is that we're, we're talking about spending an awful lot of money.
But I think the risk of not spending that money is gonna be a higher amount, dot monetary amount, that's potentially lost than giving her the raise that she deserves.
We don't even know internally if anybody would want the job, so that's another risk. We don't even know internally if anybody would want the job, so that's another risk you take. I'm all for promoting within, but what if no one wants that responsibility?
Well, like I said, first hurdle is, is we got, if we make this offer to her, we wanna do it ASAP, so that by June fifth, I think when they're gonna have their.
July fifth.
July, I mean, excuse me, July fifth, we gotta start planning, you know, she can return, she can reject that offer July first or not, whatever, then we gotta start planning Plan B, but I think we need to cross this hurdle first.
I'll second the thirty thousand. Even though I hate, I hate to spend more money, but she's so worth it in this case.
I just think it could cost us more, and a lot of headaches and.
If we don't, right.
And we're not talking just a month worth of headaches, we're talking possibly six months to a year of headaches.
Yep. And I think, I mean, the fact the city staff has basically talked to us and said that they love her here and they want her here is a, a big testament, and something that we need to listen to as well.
All right, any more discussion? I've got a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill to offer Josie Wood another thirty thousand dollars in pay per year. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Aye. George, I didn't hear you.
Obol four.
All right, so it passes four to one. Uh, anything else on the agenda?
Uh, Ms. Brooke, can we get that offer out to her ASAP? I'm sure she's looking at her emails.
She is on vacation right now, but I will reach out to her right away, so.
Well, I mean, nothing else, I know she's checking her emails. I know if I sent her a message right now and texted her, she'd call me.
She would.
I stay in contact with her pretty close when she's.
But yeah, I would like that offer sent, I, I think us as a council would like that get sent to her ASAP.
Anything else? Ladies, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries five zero, we are adjourned. Thanks for coming in, everybody, tonight on this, for a special meeting, I appreciate that.